I'm going to call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for July 10th to order, and if the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kaiser?
President.
Board Member Anderson?
Likewise.
Board Member Nakey?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Osik?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Cook?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
And Chair Bennett?
Here. Okay, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Question, McCoy, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we don't.
Okay, any reports from boards and commissions? Nope. Public comment? Chuck Lee?
Well, good evening and thank you Chair Mayor Bennett and Agency. Just wanted to come tonight, as you know, we have a proposal in front of you and wanted to be here to answer any questions, but also to express our sincere thank yous and appreciation for the million dollars that you allotted us last round in 2016. I know I just have three minutes, but I just wanted to say a few things about the program. We're very excited finishing our second year with residential construction, commercial manufacturing, digital design, and cosmetology. We had over 300 kids in those four programs, and we're close to completion this summer of our next phase, Phase Three, which will be drones is the best way to put it. I was going to say UAS, but it's drones and robotics, and also auto collision and painting. So we're excited about that. That'll get us up to six programs, and we'll start construction on Phase Four probably this fall. So we're very excited about all of that. I've sat in your seats before as a member of an urban renewal agency, and I just wanted to kind of remind you some of the things about this project that make it so attractive for urban renewal dollars. First of all, we've renovated the 150,000 square foot facility that sat vacant on Portland Road for eight years. We will have 1,000 high school kids in that urban renewal zone when this project is completed. As I said, we've got over 300 now, we'll be getting closer to 400 this coming school year. It's going to provide 60 new jobs. One of the things that is easy to overlook is we're going to have a professional development center in there that's going to bring 50,000 adults a year into that facility and into that urban renewal zone, which I think you can see the economic impact that those 50,000 visitors are going to have up and down Portland Road. Ultimately, this facility could be used on weekends by community groups and evenings. The thing that's been really exciting is that this has become really a huge success story in our community, and we have people visiting from throughout the state and nation coming into that area to look and see how they can duplicate something like that in their community. So our request from you tonight is additional million dollars on top of the million dollars you've given us already, and the $50,000 we've gotten from the Toolbox Grant. That would increase our grant award to 2 million. The support would be huge as we begin Phase Four in our facility, and we hope to have that completed in the fall of 2017. And just a reminder, too, we have a public-private partnership here where our responsibility, meaning Mountain West, is to bring resources to the table that the public schools don't have, and they pay the operation expenses. And I think that, you know, the fact that it is a public-private partnership and it's unique in this country and in this state, that it's really a remarkable accomplishment. It's about a $19 million budget, and we're up to 14 million. Your contribution tonight would get us up to 15, so there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
There's a red light in front of you.
Thank you.
That's the light.
I could keep talking, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Lee, and for all the work that you've done. I read someplace about the graduation rates for people who are on CTEC, and it's just phenomenal, and I wish you could recite those for the members of the public now.
I would love to, and that was coming up, but that red light went off, so I don't have time.
Yeah, I know. See, that's why we're here to ask you questions.
We have a graduation rate of last year, we're still kind of tabulating this year, but in 2016, 97% of the kids graduated on time. And again, our goal is to have kids, besides graduating, to have a plan to go into the workforce, continue their education at a two-year, four-year institution, or go into industry. And we want 100% participation in those goals. But yeah, statewide and in Salem-Kaiser, too, it's about 72% graduation rate, and we're at 97.
Counselor Hoy.
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. I was really pleased to be able to tour the CTEC facility about 10 days ago with Mr. Lee, and I was so impressed with the facility and the programs that are available out there. He's such an asset to our community, and I just wanted to thank you for that. I think it's an amazing thing that we have, and I really support it, so thank you.
Thank you for your kind words, Counselor.
Counselor McCoy.
Hi, Chuck, thanks for coming down and the work you're doing. You mentioned 60 jobs again, I didn't catch, was that 60 people working there, or?
Yes, working there, yeah, 60. Basically, we are not duplicating any CTE programs that are currently in the district, and so they're all new programs. So when it's built out to all 10 programs, it's going to have 60 employees that will be new to the school district's budget.
One other question. So as you move forward, you get all built out, do you have any feel yet for how many maybe students that aren't looking to go onward with their education but are going to go right into the workforce because of the training you've got? You have goals per year of how many that would be when you're all built out?
You know, one of the things that I've discovered is that there's very few high schools and institutions that really track their graduates, and so we're making a significant investment with a company out of Eugene to work with us so that we can track our graduates very sophisticated. And for us, it's important, again, as a public-private partnership, we want to come back to the City of Salem and said, okay, the data shows that because of your investment in this project, we will have firm data that will say that this is where the kids went. And it's important for us to find out if they're not doing what we hoped, so that we could adjust accordingly. But most high schools, most CTE programs, when the kids are gone, they're gone, and we are going to scientifically track them as best we can to find out. So we've only had the one, really now two graduating classes, Counselor McCoy, but we will have that kind of data available.
Counselor? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Two questions. First one is, is it an open campus, I think, or do the kids eat lunch in the school? I think I saw them eating lunch in the school when I was there.
They can, and they also are free to go off campus.
Okay.
Which will be huge in an urban renewal area.
That's, that was my point.
If I had some investment money, I'd put a hamburger place right outside.
You're stealing my thunder here. You had the stuff about the graduation rates, and you had about kids going off campus.
And if I could just add one other thing, with our lunch program, we have the same lunch program that's in the other Salem-Kaiser schools, and we're finding that the kids at CTEC dramatically reflect the population of the Salem-Kaiser School District. In other words, about 60 to 70% of our kids are on free or reduced lunch, and so we have that program there. Most of the kids take advantage of that, but some choose to bring their own lunch or go off campus. They only have 25 minutes, so.
Okay, any further questions? Right, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Does anyone else want to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Okay, the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll, item 4.3A by Member Lewis.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, that leaves on the consent calendar the minutes from the June 12th URA meeting and the June 26th URA meeting.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Information report, Ms. Rethford, is that you?
So our information report this evening is our purchases that are approved administratively, and I would like to speak to two of those, which are the murals that are in progress downtown. So the Mirror Maze mural, which is a little bit hard to say, has been completed and is currently draped, and that is on the alley on the south side of Chomekada. The second mural, the Waldo Park mural, just started the installation today, so if you are downtown this week, you can see them getting started on that. Right now, they're painting out their base, so it's just going from beige to white right now. So give it a few days, and it'll start to get interesting.
Counselor Anderson.
Thanks, I have a question about that. Several meetings ago when we discussed this, there seemed to be misunderstanding in the community that this was just an idea that you came up with, by you meaning the city government came up with, and made the choice and moved ahead. And as we discussed at that point, it was a juried presentation, and you had people making selections, and then we also had a public hearing, I think it was scheduled June 28th, and I wasn't able to make to that hearing, but I was instrumental in moving, and I think from a small room to a larger room, in case members of the public came down. So I'm wondering if you could tell us a little about, was there, were there people at the public hearing? Was there a discussion at the public hearing?
I was not in attendance at that public hearing, but the feedback that I got is that there were a few people there. I wouldn't say that there were a significant number of people, but there were people that were there, some speaking in support, and some that were concerned about the process.
Well, I just want to make it clear that I think this is the kind of process we have to do. I mean, it wasn't anything done in secret, it was something done out in the open, and I'm happy that the public had an opportunity to comment, and I'm happy that we've got the murals up.
Anyone else happy? Okay? Any, did you have, you had a second?
Nothing else.
Those two are your two things, okay? Thank you. Okay, we'll move to special orders of business. Counselor Lewis?
Sure, I'm going to recommend staff recommendation on agenda, item 4.3A.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
And this will be real quick. The main reason to pull this was, well, my personal satisfaction with how the city has handled the need of the folks at the school district. I also wanted to give Mr. Lee an opportunity to speak, but he was wise enough to choose to do that at an earlier time. And Ms. Rethford, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about the benefit, I know we talked a little bit about it, but the benefit from an urban renewal area, what this could mean for the city and the return on our investment.
Yes, I would like to speak about this, not just in the context of the urban renewal area, but more broadly, and the benefit to the city as a whole. There is a definite benefit to the urban renewal area, but there's even a larger benefit community-wide. When we are working with businesses that are already here, that are looking to expand, or when we are working with businesses that are looking at coming to the community, the top thing that we hear about over and over again is, can you meet our workforce needs? You know, that's, that's it, you know, when they look from community to community, or if they are having challenges growing, finding people to staff their production lines, that's the challenge. And so having our investment in CTEC and having these programs grow, and the number of students that it is serving grow, helps, really helps to differentiate Salem from other communities that aren't feeding that pipeline of future employees. So I hope that as we look at CTEC, we look at it just in the context of the city as a whole, as well as the benefits to the urban renewal area.
Counselor Hoy.
I just wanted to say that I can't imagine a better project for urban renewal dollars, something that benefits kids, engages them, helps them graduate at a better rate, helps an area that really needs some help in our community, and helps the overall city with our workforce. I mean, to me, that's exactly what urban renewal was designed for, so I fully support this proposal.
Counselor Anderson.
I do, too, and in fact, I asked to pull it, too, but Counselor Lewis got his motion in before mine, because I think, yeah.
Did you call him, McCoy?
Yeah. I sent it in via email, and I don't know when that comes in. Maybe you probably look at that Monday morning rather than Sunday evening at the phone calls. But I agree with Counselor Hoy, this is a fantastic thing, and this is an excellent way to spend our urban renewal funds, for the reasons that everybody said. It doesn't just help the urban renewal area, it helps the kids, it helps the industries in the area, it keeps them here, it keeps the kids here, it provides good job, it provides motivation, which is clearly evident by the graduation levels, you know, 25% higher than the standard levels at the high school. So this is fantastic, and I know the good work will be kept up, and it'll benefit the entire community.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy.
You know, in my career, I represented two major industries in the state, the grocery industry and the restaurant lodging industry. And in the restaurant lodging industry, literally one out of nine to one out of 10 employees works in that industry in this state. And I heard, we heard nonstop in the whole time in my career, we need workforce development. We need you to develop programs that bring us people that are ready to go to work, not people that are coming in and we're going to spend a ton of time training them only to see them move on to somewhere else on an ongoing basis. And it was such a hard, not to crack, it's really, that's easy to say and hard to do. And this is really one of the first programs I've seen where that's going to happen, and it's being delivered, and it's just, it's such a great deal for the city, but I think it's a real crown of the cap for Salem. It really does set us apart, and it's going to help our businesses in the long run. So I can't think of a better way to spend our money than what we're doing right now. It's definitely an answer to one of the main complaints or concerns business in general has across the state.
I want to comment as well. I have the opportunity to serve on the advisory committee for CTEC and to visit the facility fairly regularly, both for regular meetings as well as when some folks come to town to take a look at it. And I can tell you, it is unique in Oregon. It is being studied by, as Mr. Lee pointed out, by folks both locally and nationally, statewide and nationally. It is one of the really exemplary public-private partnerships that have occurred in the community. I'm really pleased that we have agreed, I'll tell you, the first time putting a million dollars into it, I think, was broke the ice. We had not done a project like this before, which is part of our urban renewal mission, which is workforce development, along with improving buildings and widening streets and infrastructure and beautifying and all the rest of it. This, to me, is at the heart of what urban renewal is about. I'm very excited that it appears from the comments, we'll be going in for a second round, and I hope if the future demands it, you're back again, Mr. Lee. I think this just is an incredibly powerful statement by the City of Salem through its urban renewal agency, that we're committed to the young people of this community and to their future as outstanding members of the workforce. And the graduation rates, as someone who works in public education, you can't, you can't get much better than 97%. It's really testimonial to this outstanding program. So thank you very much, Mr. Lee, and your sponsors have done an outstanding job, Mountain West and others, in putting this together, along with the school district. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And we have no public hearings, so the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned.
Thank you.
I call this meeting of the Salem City Council for July 10th to order, and if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Kaiser?
President.
Counselor Anderson?
Also.
Counselor Nakey?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Right, Counselor McCoy, additions and deletions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Second. Second by Nakey. Any discussion?
In that addition is a revision to an item that was on there, where's an attachment added to the item 5B, which had to do with ODOT's extension of a comet period for the impacts to Wallace Marine Park, Wallace Natural Area and the Wallace River Water Trail for the proposed Salem River Crossing Project.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And any council or city manager comments? Counselor Lewis?
Well, I was one of the fortunate ones that got to go on the Garren Island tour last Friday, and at the encouragement of Counselor Cook, I got to step onto the biggest waterbed I've ever walked on in my entire life, and that was at the reservoir. And it really is like walking on a waterbed. It, the facility, the Garren Island itself is just a, not only is it a functional place where we get our water treated, but it's a beautiful, beautiful place. We saw deer, we saw geese, we saw more geese, and even a few more geese. But it's a, it's a great place, and if you haven't, if you haven't been there, strongly encourage the council members to take that tour.
Counselor Anderson.
My comment tonight relates to, unfortunately, the comments I've made before. We've had another traffic death here in Salem. A 14-year-old girl, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce her name, but it's Shatamera Prutin, who was crossing Commercial down by Winco, close to Raybon Street there. That is a street where the speed limit is posted at 40 miles an hour, and we all know from experience that people are going faster than 40 miles an hour there. It's five lanes, two lanes going each direction, plus a turn lane, plus bike lanes, plus sidewalks that are right next to the street, as opposed to being separated from the street. You know, and I say this all the time when these happen, these can be prevented. Yes, she was crossing where there was not a crosswalk, and yes, as I understand it, one lane of the traffic stopped, and she got through that, and the other lane didn't stop. But I went out there on my bicycle and rode it just to kind of see what the distances were, and it's about, it's about one-tenth of a mile to go north to get to a stoplight, and it's two-tenths of a mile to go south to get to a stoplight. So those are not inconsequential distances for someone who wants to get across the street in a busy street where there are, there are amenities on both sides of the street that aren't just for cars to drive through fast, they're for people to be. And when this happens once, it's an accident. When it happens twice, it might be an accident, but it's happened now almost 15 times in my two and a half years on the council. This is the design flaw issue, not, what are pedestrians doing in the street? Don't they know what's dangerous and cars are there? The streets aren't for cars only, the streets are for people. You know, and we've had people here, Dan Burden and Chuck Moran, people who've talked, and Gil Penalosa on the 880 Theory, streets should be safe for your eight-year-old child and your 80-year-old grandmother, and that's just not the case here. And we need to do something about it. I think we're doing something about it in a couple places. One is the State Street Corridor Study, where we're talking about street diets, at least some part of the study. The other is the South Commercial Study, which is, which is north of this area, but there will be some pedestrian things there, too, crosswalks and medians and this sort of stuff. And, you know, so it takes 30 seconds, 45 seconds for a young woman to cross the street, and it's slowing up cars, 45 seconds in their rush to get someplace on Commercial where they're going 45 or 50 miles an hour in a street that is built to encourage speed. You know, that's, that's misordered priorities, as far as I'm concerned.
Counselor, could you help me out here, too? You mentioned that one lane had stopped. If you know, do you recall what the law is when the car in one lane adjacent stops? Isn't the law that the next lane is to?
I believe that it is, but that-
Could you share that?
Sure.
Because I think that's often misunderstood.
And in fact, I think that's been something that the Police Department has talked about in various traffic safety things, that if one car stops in a major lane, the other car should be stopping, too. It's also the law that you don't have to have a crosswalk to have the pedestrian, and I see-
Intersection is a crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah. To be able to walk across the street, and I see Counselor Hoy nodding his head, who has experience in law enforcement. You know, so yes, it's an education thing, and the public needs to be educated, both the pedestrians and the people who are driving cars. But in any situation where pedestrians and cars come, meet each other, it's the pedestrian that is going to suffer, not, not the vehicle.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCoy.
Any deaths of tragedy, and I don't want to take it away from that, but I have to disagree a little bit with some of the things Counselor Anderson said. I drive up and down that street, I live in far south Salem, so that's my main route into town. People are not going 50 miles an hour in that street. You're lucky if you hit 35, just because it's so busy, they never get to that. They just don't, you don't go 40 miles an hour down Commercial Street, you just don't. There's, I think, 13 or 15 lights between my ward and down here, and they're going off all the time, and so that traffic never gets to speed, it's pretty much stop and go. I will say that there's constant jaywalking on that street, though. To that, there is a point there, but it's not at that one speed, it's all up and down that area between Kubler and Kegler, or whatever it was going to be. And it's at different times of day. At night, it's scary, they're standing in the traffic, in the middle lane while traffic's going both ways by them. I'm amazed that they continue to do that, but again, this is not, I don't think, so much a speed issue as it is, you know, you talk about it, the pedestrians have to understand there's laws and rules and laws, too, and standing, walking across a five-lane street with traffic like that at dusk is not one of the smarter decisions anybody can make. And it's not just, it's adults, it's, you know, people with strollers, it's all kinds of folks going across the street there. I'm not sure you can build enough crosswalks to stop that, to stop that stuff, and I'm not sure how you get people to think about what they're doing before they do it, but this is just, once in a long time that that's happening, and frankly, I'm gratified that it hasn't occurred more, because almost every time I come down here, somebody's coming across that street, walking across that street where they shouldn't be.
Counselor.
Thank you. So I just want to be really thoughtful before saying anything, because as a mom with someone who has small children, this is my fear, and this is something that is a very real threat to my kids, with respect to both Counselor McCoy and Counselor Anderson. What I would say is that I take much relief from knowing that we're redoing the comprehensive planning, because one of the things that I kept thinking of is, when you have centers of food, shopping, entertainment, across from centers of residential development, how do you expect people to go from one to the other? And crossing one lane, two lane, three lane, up to, I think at Kubler now, we're at how many at the Kubler Commercial Intersection? Is it eight lanes at that newly remodeled intersection? Just taking those things into consideration and saying, are we wanting the traffic to move quickly? Are we wanting to impede flow? How are we wanting to reward that short trip, so that someone who does live next to this road and deals with that traffic on a daily basis can easily get to the other side without basis can easily get to the other side without taking unreasonable hazardous situations into their hands? How can they do it in the safest way possible? How can we design it more safely to account for those things? Thank you.
Counselor Hoy?
I'm gonna shift gears just a little bit, and not, with all due respect to the conversation, I, I'm going to talk about a different topic. And I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was my distinct pleasure and honor to attend a ceremony on July 1st at the Korean Church of Salem honoring the Korean War veterans. My father was a Korean War veteran, a Purple Heart and Bronze Star winner, and I had never participated in a program honoring him or his colleagues, and it was profoundly moving for me, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. I had the opportunity to do one a month or so ago relative to B-17s, and I had the same experience because of my father's military experience. I know exactly what you're saying. I hope any of you who are interested in these programs will let me know, particularly if you have a personal interest in, in any of these kinds of programs. I had the opportunity this weekend to participate in the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. I'm a cancer survivor, twenty-eight years without cancer, so I'm feeling like I've been granted a second lifetime, and it was a really gratifying experience to walk with, with other cancer survivors, folks who are in the midst of the illness and in the midst of treatment. It's a very touching and moving experience, and one that I hope all of you at some point will never experience. I don't want to wish that one on anybody, but, but if you ever want to participate in programs like that, I hope you let me know. This is one, sometimes the emotional side of our community can be overlooked, and, and I think it's important that we all have the opportunity to participate in these kinds of programs. This certainly was one that meant a great deal to me. This is, I, this is a twenty-five-year-old program here in Salem. I walked in the first Relay for Life twenty-five years ago at Sprague High School. They're now held out at Chamala, and on a daily basis celebrate, yeah, when you've been through things like that, you celebrate each day, but, boy, when they start to add up into years, you get a little excited. So, it was a very gratifying experience for me. Counselor Nakey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One, over the long weekend for some, Fourth of July, I had a constituent walking down Twelfth Street, and there was a, a meter hole where the, the lid had collapsed, concrete-wise. And so I emailed staff and certain members, directors of Public Works, potentially emailed me back during their vacation, and we had that fixed in a matter of, less than two days.
Wow.
And my constituent is very happy. Her, I got an email this morning from Risk Management asking how she was doing as well, because she basically rolled her ankle and swelled up, but thank you, and she says, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," in response, and I'll get her in touch with the Risk Management people as well. And then, secondly, kind of because of the reason I know her, she plays a Pokemon, there, there were some rule changes about three weeks ago, so if all of a sudden now you're seeing ten, twenty, forty people in a cluster in a park or on a street, it's not a flash mob gonna rob your business, it's a bunch of Poki players actually trying to take down a raid boss in a gym. So, that being said, you, you may see-
Thanks for the alert.
-just, just groups of people, and some of them do stupid things and run across major arterials, depending on how much time is left, so just to be mindful that a lot of people are doing other weird things out there right now, myself included, not the running across.
Mr. Fernandez, I just wanted to follow up on Counselor Anderson's comments. Is there any chance, I, I'm on Lancaster, is the big street that I'll be driving, or Portland Road, because I live in northeast Salem, and we see the same phenomenon of people dashing across. Do we have signs that say, "Watch for pedestrians mid-block," or anything like that, that would begin to alert people that this kind of activity might be occurring? Do we do anything like that?
Yeah, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, we do use those signs. We use those signs where there is a lot of, a lot of focused activity. You know, on a corridor like Lancaster, on a corridor like South Commercial Street, where it's very random, I don't believe that those signs would really do a whole lot. I mean, we had concentrated activity, then we would look at it. Frankly, the, you know, the best solution are, in my personal opinion, are physical improvements, like is proposed on the South Commercial Corridor Study, which is, you know, from, from Vista north. We also have the Ped Safety Study going on that should be completed soon, we should have recommendations, where we're looking at all of the locations where there's been pedestrian fatalities, to see what improvements can be made at those locations, and what toolbox items, improvements, what, what improvements can be added to our toolbox. And then it's just funding. You know, we've, we've, we've put in a lot of medians, we've put in a lot of crosswalks, and I am happy to continue. We, we got the one on Pringle Road under construction at the ESA, and we're happy to put in more. It's really just, it's really just money.
Well, I remember one going in on Seventeenth and Chomekada, as I recall Chomekada, and having a fatality there fairly soon thereafter. I mean, it seems like there's, it's also a traffic-related problem as well. I just, I, I'm just wondering if there are other things that can be done. I'm, I'm, the only one I'm aware of that seems to work on a daily basis fairly well is the flashing lights, particularly on Twelfth Street.
That's right. That's, that's a great tool. That, that one's really, that's, that's been a home run. Yep.
Counselor Cook?
I was just curious, in speaking with your ideas about any of the plans, do we have any plans for separated pedestrian walkways or separated pedestrian paths? I know the way that we're widening roads now to incorporate for bike and ped. Do we have any plans for, like, over a bridge or separated paths? Is that something that?
Yeah, so separated paths are a great thing. We really are a, a very tightly-built community, so there really isn't the right-of-way for separated paths. Wherever we can build, I mean, our, our standard is to build sidewalks away from the curb when there's, when there's new streets. So wherever possible, Commercial Street is an old cross-section. Unfortunately, that's, it's very uncomfortable for pedestrians to walk up and down that street. Great separations, unfortunately, are very expensive and not very well-used, and the perfect example is at Twelfth Street at Willamette. The university spent a million dollars, and then, years later, said, "Please put a, put in the rapid flashing beacon." So, you know, unless they're connecting two buildings, or we have topography, people don't want to climb up, go across, and then climb down, so it's just, they're, they're just very, they're very expensive, and we don't, we don't see a lot of use from them, so they're-
Counselor-
They're the safest. They're certainly the safest way to go. They're just not very well-used.
Thank you. Director Fernandez, you know, we're just getting done now with the Commercial Street north of Vista, and I know I'm having some meetings, I think, with Julie Warnicki coming up in the future, and we're gonna move forward on that. Once that is done, you know, and it's not just pedestrian there, it's everything, are there plans to look at Commercial south of Vista or south of Kubler with the same kind of studies that we did north of Vista?
Yeah, so there, there really isn't. We looked at that area because of the investments that have been made, so we're looking to support the fact that there are a number of restaurants and coffee shops and stuff, so we wanted to, to turn that into a more pedestrian-friendly area, so that was the impetus. As we're starting to see more investment, you know, with the, you know, the Jersey Mikes and-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
-some of the other stuff-
Custom Trader Joe's there.
Right, then there, there could be opportunities to, to, you know, seek grants to, to-
So, so-
To look at that, so-
As of now, it's not yet developed up, up enough to the point that it is north of Vista where you say it's time for a study, but it seems like it's moving in that direction.
Right, right.
Well, you know, it'd be terrific if you could just keep that in mind as, as something else that could possibly be done on that end of town as it develops.
We will, and I know that, I don't, I don't know how much money we have in the budget, but we specifically, the Ped Safety Study, which is really coming to an end, but it, we have, we're having our consultants look at each of the locations where we had a fatality, and we'll see if we can add this location as well, if, if, if funding permits, because we made it a point, and it's, it's a little bit delayed because we had such a rainy winter that the consultants really wanted to wait so that the weather was similar to when the, the crashes had occurred, so we could get good feedback. And they're actually, they're actually analyzing and standing and viewing the locations at the time that the accident happened, so they can really get a good handle on what may have happened, you know, beyond what we read in, in an accident report. So we'll see if, we'll see if we can add, I can't promise anything, but we'll see if we can add this location and add that to, to see what, what happened here and what, and what, if anything, can be done in and around that location.
Counselor Lewis, then Counselor Hoy.
Yeah, just to Counselor Cook's point about the separated bike and pedestrian paths, it's my understanding when the council can get to the point where they can make a decision on marine drive, that will be a street that has a separated bicycle and pedestrian path.
That is correct.
Thank you. I can't let this conversation go by without talking about Fisher Road and the fact that we didn't, and I know you and I, Mr. Fernandez, have had conversations about that, and we did have a recent traffic pedestrian fatality there in February, and I'm looking forward to the, the work you're doing to look at some engineering solutions, short of being able to actually install sidewalks and other very expensive items. I know there potentially could be some other alternatives, and I look forward to that conversation with you.
Counselor McCoy?
Peter, a question, now we're talking about, you, you talk money, so what is, what's the difference in price between a regular crosswalk with a red light and those flashing ones like they have over in Long Island?
Yeah, so, so a rapid flashing beacon, like on Twelfth Street, run about thirty-five thousand dollars installed. You know, a traffic signal can run a half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars, and need, so, but in, but in both cases, they need to be placed properly, so, so they need to be well-supported. They, they, you see the rapid flashing beacons are, you know, places that are kind of tighter, you know, like at Twelfth Street, where, where there's a lot of, the, the land uses are much more compact, the crossing is compact. We have one at Market Street also. We'd have to think about out on Commercial Street, where there's a lot wider spaces, whether they make sense there or not. We don't want to put pedestrians in, in a more dangerous situation than they already are, so, so I don't necessarily know that that would be the right solution out there.
Yeah, well, you see where I'm going. Heck, you can build ten of those for the price of one regular-
Oh, sure.
-stoplight intersection, but, I mean, you know, my experience is, I see those, and bang, man, they're still right in front of you, I'm stopping immediately on those things, versus paying attention to what's up there and the flow of the traffic and everything else. But is there anywhere it's experimented, or is there any, you know, like, technology or studies from the people that build them saying, you know, "Don't go over four lanes," or "Don't go over," because that is a broad stretch there in Commercial.
So that's, so that's the kind of thing that we're having, our, our consultants are experts, and, and as a part, in fact, as a part of that, we have a, a nationally-recognized expert that's on their team as well, that's not part of the firm, looking at solutions. So we'll see what we can add to, to the toolbox that might make sense at different, in different parts of town.
Right, because I'd be really interested to hear an answer for that, and I think that, that stretch of road is, if, if you're gonna see how it works for thirty-five thousand dollars, that's, that's a prime candidate, because that is, it's constant jaywalking there. It's not once in a while, it's every night, every day, at all times of the day.
Yeah, so we'd want, we'd want to look at and just see what, we know what the issue is, we want to, we would want to find the solution that provides the greatest level of, of safety for, once we put a pedestrian, you know, in that, in that crosswalk.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. Director Fernandez, I did have a question with this consultant that you're bringing in. Are you also looking at areas where there's a high amount of accidents, vehicle to vehicle, and not just vehicle to pedestrian?
No, in this case, we looked specifically, we wanted to specifically look where there had been pedestrian fatalities, because we were, we were frustrated that, you know, we, we couldn't find an answer, you know? In most cases, oh, dark clothing at night, there are some DUIs involved, but we wanted to look beyond that and see, well, what else is happening physically at that location? Is there more lighting needed? Is there more striping needed? Are there, are there other, are there other things that could be done? And then on top of that, what other, what are we not thinking about? You know, we, we've done a lot, you know, we've done a lot with medians and with rapid flashing beacons and with striping. What else is being done that could be applied here that we're not thinking about or haven't, or haven't considered?
And will those results be made public?
Yes, yeah, the consultants, like I said, the consultants working on it. I think there's a, there's a draft that's being developed, and we very much intend to, to put that in the public, and at some point, perhaps even have a council workshop so that you can see how the analysis was done and what the possible solutions are.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoy?
I just want to caution my colleagues about using terms like jaywalking. Just because somebody is walking across the street where there's not a marked crosswalk does not mean it's jaywalking, jaywalking, there's actually a legal definition of that, and you do have the legal right to, to cross the street at places other than where there's a marked crosswalk and other than, at a corner, depending on the situation. So I just would encourage you to look at that, and, and especially out on Commercial, where there, there, you can go a significant distance without blocks. You can, you can legally cross the street in some of those areas.
Yes. Alrighty. Very good, very interesting. Thank you, Counselor Anderson, for bringing that up. Mr. City?
Well, I would like Director Fernandez to keep the mic and update the council briefly on the transportation bill that was just passed by, by the legislature.
Yes, and-
And the impact for, for Salem, the benefits to Salem.
We are very appreciative of the legislature passing a very substantial transportation bill. We have some preliminary estimates of what that might mean to the community over the next five biennia, and the numbers for Salem are very substantial. Obviously, this year, we won't see anything. We'll start to see some of that, some of those effects in next year's budget, and then in, in budgets following. And this is, the mayor and I went to visit the legislature back when the committee was just forming, and we talked a lot about the need for maintenance, for maintenance dollars, that we can handle our own capital dollars through geo-bonding, but it's really maintenance dollars that we're suffering from. And, boy, they, they delivered for us, because there's a lot of just general gas tax, well, gas tax, it includes a lot of fees, but a lot of transportation trust fund monies that will go right into operations and maintenance, and, you know, what we're committed to, what we've been committed to is a lot of contract work for repaving, for writing sidewalks, for re-striping, for signals, so that in combination with the streetlight fee, that's already saved us one and a half million dollars that we've been able to put into streets. This is, this is very, very good news. It'll be two, three, four years before the real big dollars start to flow, but we are very, very excited and very appreciative.
Counselor Lewis?
I'm, I'm curious, and you may not have it now, but if you don't, if you could bring it back to the council of the $5.2 billion over the next ten years, what will the City of Salem generate?
Julie had the, do you have kind of those numbers off the top of your head, what they were over the next three biennia? She wrote, she wrote an email, I don't, I just don't have it.
Off the top of your head?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll email, we'll forward you the, what the, what the LOC estimate is for the City of Salem.
Great.
It's not, it's, it's, you know, it's in the millions, it's not in the billions for us.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, okay? Any other comments, okay? Great, thank you very much. And we'll have a, we have no proclamation, no proclamations this evening, so we'll have a presentation.
Thank you very much. My name is Gretchen Bennett, I'm staff to the City of Salem in the Mayor and City Managers' Office, and Dr. Patty asked me to read his remarks for all of you this evening. Dr. Patty's words, "These statues represent some of India's culture, history, and mysticism. Lord Shiva, founder of yoga, is the great teacher, guru, and mentor. He is the Nacha Jaran, the cosmic dancer, creating with one hand and destroying in the other. The late Mr. Bob Johnson of Salem worked in the U.S. Embassy in New Delhi, India, in the late 1950s, and collected memorabilia there. He gifted these statues to me, to Dr. Patty. In my fantasy, I think that Salem's Department of Parks and Recreation should include health maintenance. As a psychiatrist in Salem for many years, it has been my mission to help people take responsibility for their physical and mental health. The above teachings, yoga, dancing, and having a guru mentor should be a guide for us. Also, we should mentor others as well. It is my honor today to present these sculptures to Salem-" others as well. It is my honor today to present these sculptures to Salem, to the Mayor, the Honorable Mr. Chuck Bennett, today."
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Patty. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
We have a city manager and city attorney for moving heavy statues. Okay. We'll move on to public comment.
Good afternoon. As said, my name is Sandra Hernandez. I'm a resident of northeast Salem. I am also the current coordinator of Latinos Unidos Siempre, a nonprofit youth organization that fights for social justice in our community. And today, I'm here because I'm concerned and about an issue for, actually, a committee that was just created for transportation, public transportation here in our city. Happy to hear that the state passed a transportation budget for, to bring in more transportation and development around Oregon. And I'm also happy to know that the mayor has created a committee to ensure that the transportation, the public transportation in Salem is actually adequate for its residents. However, I'm really disappointed at the fact that the committee is not made up of people who are affected by transportation. As I look down at these names, I'm not seeing just the regular folk who uses transportation, youth, people with disabilities, people low income, elderly people who, I think, have a lot of knowledge about how transportation can become better in our community, about what it is that we're lacking, about what is working. And I would like to see more support to the community by inviting them in to be part of this committee. And I myself would not mind being part of the committee. As someone who works with youth and who actually uses a public transportation, I think our voices are very mattered to these types of committees. And they would make much more of a difference than just a group of people who might not use the transportation. And I could be assuming that these people don't use it, but I see that a lot of them already have positions of power in the city or in organizations. And it's not fair to the common people who uses transportation on a daily basis. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Yeah, Sandra, I want to apologize. What we did was approve a transit committee, made it known that it was open for applications, and unfortunately, we had to, I felt, we needed after a month to begin to move ahead. And I had no applications from women. I had no applications from blind, disabled, Hispanic, Samoan. And unfortunately, we ended up with a committee. I think you appropriately characterized, although there are union member, there is a rider, there's at least one rider, regular rider, and others. But we're going to correct that. I want you to know that. I became aware of it, that there actually was interest. And I will, we'll be immediately getting you an application to have you get on the committee if you're interested. It's just one of those situations where you call for applications, you get your applications, and people who are interested apply. And I think what we're finding out is, once we post the list, there's a lot more interest that's willing to step up now. So I really appreciate you coming down and making your interests known.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I could also comment about the invitations. I think they should be more, there needs to be more access to the applications, because even as me who works for a nonprofit and who's constantly aware of the issues going on in our communities, I wasn't aware of the application, even less the youth I work with, or my friends who do use the public transportation. So I would be more than happy to assist.
Watch us closely from now on, Sandra, because we're moving all the time. And we'd be glad to include you or anyone else you'd recommend. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much for coming down. I know a lot of people shared your concerns, and I encourage you to apply. And you can do that online, or you can do that, you can call the City Manager's Office and ask to speak to Linda Rose, who is the mayor's assistant, who can help you move through that process. I will tell you that I and some other people in the community have been actively searching. And we, right now, have at least four people who fit some of the qualifications that you were discussing, who have already, have stepped up and said they're ready to apply. And I've already sent their names on to the mayor's office, and they need to fill out the application. So if you do that, I think that'd be a terrific thing. So thanks a lot.
We're glad Counselor Anderson is taking an interest at this point, and helping us finding some new people. I hope other counselors will take the time as well. Coming late to the game is often easier than coming on time, and not in your case. You should have been notified. We'll make sure counselors will go to their neighborhood groups maybe in the future and announce it more clearly that these opportunities exist. And Counselor Hoy made the point of saying, right out of the chute, I want to be on it. And there he is. What do you want?
Thank you, Ms. First, I want to thank you for appointing me to that committee. And I want to thank you, Sandra, for coming down. I really appreciate you bringing your voice to this conversation. It's been a concern of mine since I've been on the council and before, that people, especially from Ward 6, I'm not sure which ward you live in, but we only have two representatives from Ward 6 on any of the 18 boards and commissions for the city. And I can tell you that every neighborhood association meeting I go to, and I go to every one of them, all three of them in my ward, I mention this issue. And I always talk about the openings and how people can apply. I would love it if you had suggestions on how we can reach out to people better, and as a city, because we have a lot of openings, and we post them on our website, but that's not always the best way. So I would love it if you have suggestions on how we can reach out to others who might be similarly situated, who might be bringing a great voice to one of these boards or commissions. I would love to hear your suggestions.
Great, thank you. And I think a good way to start is just by approaching the many social justice organizations in the city who work directly with the people who are most affected by the social issues. And I think that's a great way to start as city counselors. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. How did you ultimately find out about the committee?
Just by a friend who was, it's kind of a long list of people who, organizations that I have contact with, and a friend who's in contact with a specific organization told me about it, who, it's kind of a puzzle, right? So like, an organization needs to know about it, someone in there, then they approach someone else, and then we've got to tell our community. So it's a long process. And I think, like, as someone who's appointed by the government, I think our city councils, and everyone should have more direct contact with the regular folk, rather than having to, you know, look for ways to include people, giving us that work on top of what we already do, which I love doing. But I think it takes away the voice of a lot of people in the community.
Yep, thanks.
Great. Thank you very much, Sandra.
Thank you.
Just about Franco?
Hello, my name is Hensbrough Franco, and I really would like to thank Mayor Chuck Bennett and council for letting me address you. I'm here because I want to address the issue of transit. One of the things that was on my mind was that one of the councilmen spoke out about how somebody had misunderstood and said that it was a secret meeting, or that it wasn't held, you know, somehow. I'm not really sure how it went. But, you know, one of the ways that I think could really increase regular youth and other people to come onto these types of committees, if they're supposedly not secret, is to go to these places, go to the community colleges, go to the high schools, and, you know, drop off brochures, explaining or telling about the events, you know, that are going to affect us. You know, I'm disabled, you know, I was born blind, and I have absolutely no light perception. And my partner, who just brought me down to the podium, lives south of Coogler, where the streets are really badly paved. So I can't go down there on the weekends, okay, because there's no transit. So I don't get to see him, since I live with my parents. And then when there, in the week when there is transit, you know, I still, I have a limited time, because the bus, you know, ends quite early. And also, I go to, I go to college. I just recently graduated from Warner Pacific with a human development degree. But I had to go to night classes, too, and I have to be really careful about when I go to those classes, because transit doesn't align with the time the classes end. So I have to get rides, or go take cabs, or do some other thing. But, you know, and as far as that goes, it's pretty, pretty bad, because, like, again, I don't get to be able to get food after I get out of school, because, well, the bus has to take me home, or I'll be stranded. You know, and one of the things, too, is for, you know, taking responsibility for our own physical and mental health. A lot of these things that are like yoga and all that stuff, sometimes is held when we can't go, like, on the weekends. So it's like, it really would help if somehow the transit, even if it can't be extended by its hours, could be extended to at least the weekends. Because that way, we could be able to do all those things to take charge of our health, to take charge of our everything, you know, because there's a lot of people that could benefit from being able to get out on the weekends, like elderly people or disabled people. And one of the things, too, that the reasons I can't really safely walk in places is because of the disorganization of all the streets in Salem. And, you know, some places, it's really well organized, like downtown, and other places, like south of Commercial, it's not. And I understand that that takes time, and I understand that it takes money, and, you know, all this stuff. But in the meantime, more transit would be awesome.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Franco. And that, I'm hoping, will be one of the outcomes of this committee and its advice to the Transit Board, which is the government organization that manages the transit system. So thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming down this evening. And hopefully, we, with the additional funding that's come from the legislature, will see the Transit Board begin funding the kind of transit system that'll serve your needs. So thank you.
So this place where we can go to look at these events, is it just the Salem website? Okay.
For the boards, the commissions, for all these meetings and stuff like this?
Well, once the meetings start, which they're not going to start right away, we want to make sure we have the right group in the committee before we start having meetings. But they'll be publicly announced, they'll be on the website. And hopefully, if you watch that, and if you attend your neighborhood group, your counselor will be alerting you to these meetings. And we'll try to make sure we have as much information out as we can get out on it. They're certainly not secret.
Just a-
Yes.
Which would be the proper media form that you would use? Would you prefer email? Would you prefer a posting online?
I know that myself and a lot of the blind community use computers to the max. I mean, we use, we are on social media, you know, we use email, we do all this stuff through the internet, because, like I said, a lot of limitations to travel. And, you know, a lot of limitations, too, like when I, when I'm walking around, I don't know that there's a sign, you know. I didn't know anything about any of the stuff. So it's like, you know, internet is the biggest, the biggest form of us finding out things.
Are you following the City of Salem on Facebook or Twitter?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we'll make sure this, these meetings, once they start, are on there. So thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Certainly, anytime. Alex, Ron?
Hello, my name is Alex. I live in northeast Salem, Ward 6. I came here with the intentions to speak about the board that was formed, but it seems like, like the Mayor Chuck Bennett said, that it could be easily fixed. But I also want to speak upon how transit is such an important part to everybody in the community. I'll tell you firsthand, I grew up writing transit here in Salem. I remember when it was in front of the courthouse. Also remember when it was on Cottage Street for a little bit, that chaotic period of time. So I'm really, really familiar with transit. I also have a lot of beautiful memories of downtown Salem. Like, for instance, when it was in front of the courthouse, I remember the Rose Garden, the minute, the little small Rose Garden that's still there today, my mother would take me there to catch ladybugs. So every summer, we would go downtown, on the bus, catch ladybugs, go to the public library, eat a sandwich, right here, in the little lake park right here. And those are a lot of beautiful memories. And actually, it's a shame that a lot of people probably can't experience those memories. And you don't have to have a lot of money to do this, just to spend time with your mom, check out a book. So it's really important that we get this right, you know, we get the transit situation right, and we get, you know, the right people there, you know, because, like I said, it doesn't take a lot of money just to have beautiful memories of Salem, or downtown Salem. I'll tell you firsthand, I have a lot of memories here downtown, and I continue to make them to this day. But like I said, let's do it right, let's get it right, and let's not, you know, prolong it, because it really has been, you know, not working fully for a very long time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alex, very much. Oh, yeah, Chris.
Alex, I just wanted to thank you for coming down, especially, we don't, I don't often see my neighbors from Ward 6 coming down to City Hall. And I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to come down here and share your thoughts with us about transit. I agree completely with everything you said, and I really appreciate you sharing your memories with us.
Thank you.
Alex, sorry, just one more question. Thank you for coming down. Can you describe how long it normally takes on transit for you to get out into your neighborhood?
Well, I can tell you in different periods of time. I remember when I was a high schooler, I had two chances to get home. I used to take 5 or 5A. If I missed number 5, it was a straight shot home. If I took 5A, it would drop me off in the corner of Green Crest and Center Street. And I would just walk a couple of steps to my house. But then they cut 5A, so now I had to wait a little longer for 5. And it used to be that 5 would turn into the same one that would go down Market Street. And at one point in time, it was even more convenient, because that very same bus would take me to Chameca. And I know that was very convenient for my mother when she took Spanish, English classes. But fortunately, I haven't taken the buses lately. But like I said, I have very, very strong connection with the transit. But if I did take it, I do know, because I also work with youth, that it isn't what's called efficient for them to get to school.
Thank you.
I also work at Latinos Unidos Siempre as well.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alex, very much. Robert Courtwright.
Hey, our members of the council, I'm Robert Courtwright. I live in west Salem in Ward 8. I'm here tonight to request that you direct the city staff to work with ODOT and the Federal Highway Administration to restart the 4F notice process and prepare a revised assessment of the impacts of the proposed third bridge and related roadways on Wallace Marine Park. This should include posting of public notices at Wallace Marine Park and flagging the proposed roadways and ramps, so that park users can understand what areas will be impacted. The purpose of the 4F notice is to enable the public to understand what improvements are proposed and what their impact will be. are proposed and what their impact will be on the park and its recreational activities, features, and amenities. The current notice is shamefully inadequate on these points. The notice doesn't include a map or any other illustrations which show where the bridge or roadways will be located in relation to the park facilities. The notice fails to identify the Glen Creek Trail, which connects the Union Street Rail Bridge to Glen Creek Road, as an affected recreational feature, even though Marine Drive would be built adjacent to and over the trail. If you go to this trail today, if you haven't been there, I encourage you to go, you'll see that the trail provides a quiet pastoral experience for park users and trail users. Trees and landscaping buffer and separate the users from enjoying urban development. Uh, that experience will be dramatically changed by the presence of Marine Drive. The notice says nothing about the traffic, noise, or visual impacts of Marine Drive and the connecting highway ramps on the park and trail. According to the EIS that's been done on Salem River Crossing, this section of Marine Drive will be an arterial and it will carry eight thousand to ten thousand vehicles a day. It's important to understand the character of this traffic. Westbound, there are gonna be cars and heavy trucks accelerating from the intersection of Glen Creek Road and Marine Drive, along Marine Drive, and up over ramps that go over the Union Street Rail Bridge, the Center Street Bridge, and the Marion Street Bridge. And the same will be true the other direction. That's going to significantly affect uh, the, the impact, or significantly affect the trail. The purpose of the 4F process is to determine whether there's a diminus, diminimus impact on the park's activities and features. A diminimus finding means there are no adverse effects, or in common language, that there will be insignificant or negligible effects. The construction of a new arterial road, including ramps from a state highway that will carry several thousand cars a day, next to a well-used recreation trail, will substantially change and impair the recreational value of both the park and the trail. For this reason, a full and fair evaluation of the impact should be done and the pu- public should be given an opportunity to fully understand those impacts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Courtwright. What exactly do you mean by restart? Because I will tell you that the original situation was, the notice came out June twenty-eighth, we had till July twelfth to comment. Staff is now, after the motion was made, will be made tonight, has now moved it up with ODOT to the twenty-eighth. The motion is to, to August eighth, is, the twelfth, excuse me. Is that a restart, or do you mean something more when you say restart?
Well, I certainly appreciate the extension of time, but I don't think that the public has good information about what's being proposed and what the impacts are. So, simply extending the notice period doesn't give people constructive information about what's proposed and what the impacts will be. And that's what I think you should do to restart the process. Put together a report that tells people that. Flag the park so people know what's being proposed.
Counselor Hoyt.
Mr. Courtwright, thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. I'm curious about what you meant when you said ramps will go over the top of the Union Street Bridge and the, and the Center Street Bridge. Can you clarify that for me? I don't.
Certainly. Um, so, this is all the third bridge proposal and the connection from Highway twenty-two to the proposed third bridge, you know, are ramps that cross up over the Marion and Center Street Bridge and over the Union Street Rail Bridge and then drop down to grade along Wallace Marine Park.
That is a factor, if that's a fact, that's news to me. I had not heard that that would be the case.
If you have any questions, ask city staff.
Okay, thank you very much. E.M. Easterly.
Good evening, members of the council and Mayor Bennett. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My address is seven seven five Fir Gardens Northwest in West Salem. That's Ward Eight. Uh, I'd like to definitely support the motion that Counselor Kizer has offered, but I would like, as Mr. Courtwright has suggested, to, I use the word suspend in the documents that should be in your packets for several reasons, in addition to the ones that he cited. No one speaks in this public notice that Wallace Marine Park is part of the Willamette Greenway. And if you read carefully the language of what it means to be diminus, and I'll quote from the ODOT Section 4F, "A diminus impact is one that will not adversely affect the activities, features, or attributes." And I'm focusing on the attributes. The fact that no one was given notice that this particular process that was discussed in the twenty eighth, June twenty-eighth public announcement was going to impact the Willamette Greenway. So, instead of me repeating what I've already written to the council about some of the deficits, what I'm asking, A, is please support the motion from Counselor Kizer, but please also consider going beyond that for all the reasons that Mr. Courtwright has offered, this additional one that I have suggested. And I would bring one other point to you. The Assistant Director for Public Works submitted to you a graphic example coming back from last October describing all of the implications around this proposal. This at least answered, when I read that, I, I at least understood what the parameters were that were being proposed. Unfortunately, parts of the intrusion into Wallace Marine Park were not included in the announcement. So, given my brother's, I would ask council to simply suspend right now and if necessary, take whatever action to move this process to a later date. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Easterly. Any questions? Okay? That is the last person signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else? This is for issues on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor and council, my name is Steve Anderson, co-chair for the West Salem Neighborhood Association. And first off, I'd like to say that the West Salem Neighborhood Association supports the completion of the environmental impact study. More information will come to the council on a later on that issue and how that was voted upon, but tonight, a few questions and odd items for consideration on the 4F process that the city council needs to take place. First, navigating the judicial land use and regulatory maze for a property subject to 4F for diminus is crucial. We want to assure that the city actions cover all the bases and does not delay the completion of this environmental impact study. Diminus impact determinations require the agency coordinate and public involvement. The current notice does not do that. It requires the officials, which is the city council with jurisdiction over parks, recreation areas, and waterfowl areas, be notified officially that a diminutous determination will take place in your jurisdiction. This, has this happened yet? I don't believe so. At which opportunity the public review and comment must be provided? Does this mean that the city council has to do an additional impact process? And further, the regulations require that depending on the type of 4F property, for example, historical sites, there's consultation that has to take place? And this means the Union Street Bridge and impacts to that? Has that consultation been entered into? Has it been set up? You must also review all comments submitted to you in this matter and to the ODOT. And after considering those comments, you will have to make an official declaration in writing that requires you to state that there's no adverse effects to activities, features, or attributes to that park. This means that the whole park area, not just part of it, as in the current announcement. Further, you'll have to consider current impacts as well to historical sites, the Union Street Bridge, and findings of no adverse impacts to historical properties or removal of part of that structure will be factored in. Finally, the public-owned parks and waterfowl refuges must be notified as not adversely affect. This means the whole park, not just part of it. And you also have to consider concurrent impacts as part of your deliberation. For his historical sites, and I'll not go through regulations, you have to determine that there's no adverse effect on the historical site or that the project does not affect historical sites. In this case, that is not true. Furthermore, members of city staff, one member of the city staff serves in the decision-making process in this process. The question is, contact with that person, does that fall under judiciary process? I partake. Since you're officials in this matter, how do you contact that person? How do you interact with that person? And how is that noticed? I don't know the answer to that one. That's a question for you. In conclusion, 4F properties are significantly public-owned parks, recreation areas, as this, and historical places. You will have to make a written finding as a diminus or greater than diminus. You have the choice, whether it's a diminus impact or greater than diminus impact. You will have to make that decision in writing this proceedings. This will affect how these areas are treated in the environmental impact statement. It will not affect the completion of the environmental impact statement, but it will affect how the study goes forward. The missteps here is what we're concerned about. How you handle the judicial land use and regulatory minefield can impact the completion of the environmental impact statement. These questions and several orders need to be answered in your role as officials in this process. We encourage you to make sure that all pieces fit together correctly. This seems to be an important need right now. It is more than just a extension of the deadline. The Neighborhood Association supports completion of the environmental impact statement as quickly and as efficiently as possible. We do not want to see the ball fumbled here, and there are many places where it can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? You're up. Go ahead.
Um, good evening, Mayor Bennett and city councilors. I am Linda Barely, I live in Ward Eight. And I guess my request, um, is that if there's some way, this could be marked off in the park so that people could know, um, what it, you know, what, um, the description in the public notice is for a wide strip and they don't really, you know, is it bigger than a breadbox? So, it would be nice if, if it could be marked off so that people could know. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laurie Doherty, I live in Ward Two. Mayor Bennett, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to talk about the, the Transit Committee. Sandra Hernandez laid out very beautifully the number, the kinds of constituencies, the different people for whom transit is a really critical issue. I mean, I sometimes have access to my daughter's car, but mostly from my own life, I bike walk or take the bus. So, you know, I do ride the bus. And, um, I, I know, I've been a transit rider, you know, most of my life, in different cities. So, I, I understand how important it is. Also, you know, this council identified as one of the things it needs to do is improve communications with the public. So, these two things go together, you know? In this, in this case, this is a case in point. And I think communication isn't just about putting information out there and waiting and seeing what falls out. It's about understanding who the people are, where they are, what they need, how to reach them, and understanding that people are reached in different ways. And being proactive about, you know, going out and asking people, you know, how they can participate and how they can engage. So, I think, um, I would urge the council to put off filling this committee until there has been an effort to increase the diversity of it, to, you know, bring in the different constituencies for whom transit is a critical issue. We, we haven't had, you know, a really adequate bus system for a long time. We're not gonna huddle in the next month. We have time to do this right, and it's important enough to do this right. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do wanna correct one thing. Uh, we did, we made it known. Uh, we have asked councilors to go to their neighborhood groups, but unfortunately, we didn't get the kind of response we anticipated. And, uh, we will open this up further, uh, and be taking addition, we'll, we'll, hopefully the council will agree with me to enlarge, uh, the membership of this committee and we'll, we'll not start to meet. But don't think this will solve the problem. You're gonna have to go to the other government agency that actually runs the transit system. At some point, someone's gonna have to hold that Transit Board responsible. My hope is, this group will help. But the public also needs to know, so I'll just say it, at tonight's meeting, people need to start going to the Transit Board to tell them what the problem looks like, 'cause they have the money, they run the transit system. We're just trying to share what we know our constituents want, which is they want better hours, they want better routes, and they want more frequency. And those are the kinds of things we'll be talking about, plus we need to talk about financing. So, uh, this isn't the end-all group. There is a Transit Board that you voted for that needs to be dealt with as well. So, I just wanna share that with you and, and any members of the public that are kind of confused as to how this system works. We don't run the transit system. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Joyce Judy. I live in Ward Five. Thank you, um, Mayor Bennett and council members for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to make one, a couple of little corrections with respect to the Transit Committee. Um, there's at least one person here whose name is Damon Talbot, who has in fact submitted an application previously and actually received a response back from the city manager acknowledging that he had in fact submitted his application. He never got a response back letting him know one way or the other whether he was on the committee. The other thing relative to a female being on the committee, you have three male counselors who are on this committee. You could easily swap out one of those male counselors with a female counselor to at least fill that necessity. And that's all I have to offer.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else?
Hey, my name is Kenneth Hetzel. I live at seven four five Harris Street in the Morningside neighborhood. And I wanna talk about a more sobering subject. I think it's six C on the agenda tonight. When I moved here nine years ago, July third, I got up the next morning, Saturday morning, and walked down Commercial Street and attended an AA meeting at St. Paul's Church. There were forty-five people, men and women, that stood up and said, "I'm an alcoholic and I wanna be better." The next Tuesday, I went to Calvary Baptist Church to annami a National Alliance on Mental Illness Support Group. And there were two ladies that stood up and said, "My kids are mentally ill and I want them to get help." The point is, people will admit they're alcoholics. They don't wanna admit they have a mental illness. It's an easy slope to self-medicate and get hooked on drugs and alcohol and to be criminalized and punished for, for a, an addiction. All of the homeless shelters want you clean and sober. There's no place that you can be. I don't like sobering center or facility. I like harm reduction. If you drink one less today, it's better than if you drink one more. And, and tomorrow and next month, the next year will get better and better and better. So, I appreciate the city thinking about helping with a sobering facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Good evening, Damon Talbot. I am in Ward Five. Uh, Ms. Joyce had mentioned me, so I thought I should address the council and the mayor. It did concern me slightly that, I don't know if there was a miscommunication, but I had submitted an application very shortly after the first announcement was made. I've spoken at the Chariots Transit Board Meeting. I prepared a very nice document. They were very happy to have me speak to them. They were actually who had told me about the upcoming Transit Committee and referred me to say, "Hey, you should apply for this," which I did. But not getting into that, 'cause it seems like later tonight, we may find some solutions to changing that board and its makeup. Just wanna speak a little on transit. Myself, I am a transit user and luckily, I have a ride tonight, so I don't have to leave early to get home on the bus. But, uh, there are certain things the city can do, not just waiting for Chariots to make changes. If Chariots wants to put up bus stops at certain areas and rightaways, the city can, through ordinances or removal of SDC fees and things like that, work with the city to make those items easier for them to provide transit to the residents. And there's a lot of other things that I think that this Transit Committee on the city side, not just the Chariot side, will be able to look at in partnership with the Chariots people to say, "Hey, what are your guys' plans? What are things that the city could do to later make those easier for you to do?" So, I do think the city having its own Transit Committee is very beneficial, not just relying on Chariots to do their own work, but for the city to have a way to say, "These..." on Chariots to do their own work, but for the city to have a way to say, "These are some steps we can take to prepare for the upcoming changes that Chariots might want to do." So I look forward to possibly being on the committee and, you know, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Damon, very much. Anyone else?
Over comment on a non-.
No, no, not now. They come at the end. I'm sorry.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Do you want to go through it?
We've got minutes from the June 26th council meeting and minutes from the June 26th work session, a meeting of the council. We have a resolution dedicating the land required from FMF Farms in Jeffrey and Pamela Gallagher to the public right-of-way. And we've got the reappointment of Ron Helwell as a municipal judge pro town.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Information reports. Whoops, special orders of business. Well, you can all see who's so far on the Transit Committee. What I'd like to do is come back to you with some additional names and expand the size of the committee. Now that we have caught the council and the public's attention, maybe we'll start getting some new and different names. I appreciate you all taking an interest in this, and certainly for the public's interest. I think we are missing some categories of members that now that we can know they're interested, we'll put them on. They'll need to fill out applications. So far, Mr. Talbot is the only person with an application in place that I'm aware of at this point.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the application can be found on the City of Salem's website under board and commission appointments.
Or call the mayor's office, 588-6255, and they'll direct you or get one off to you. Yes, that's exactly right. Anything else? Council McCoy?
Do you have a number that you want on this committee?
Not yet.
Just wondering if it's going to be 20, 30?
No, it can be, frankly, I was kind of, we put together a small committee. I think larger's better in this issue. I really do. And I think that the testimony we heard tonight really illustrates the kinds of issues that are going on and the need to make sure the voices are diverse enough to represent the community very broadly. I think this committee could probably channel some of it, but I don't think that's the best way to do it. I think it'd be much better to go to primary sources and get the kind of information we're going to need. Okay? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, just an idea. When we have boards and commissions that are not filled, even if they're not filled with alternates, would it be appropriate to update not only neighborhood associations, but the general public through the city manager's report or through the neighborhood chair organization, just to keep that information circling more currently?
And I think we do. Casey, can you speak to that?
Sure. I will say that that process should become simplified with some new software that we've invested in. Right now, the management of boards and commissions is all manual, and that's been difficult information to collate and takes a lot of time and effort to do so. But we, as we have our boards and commissions meeting, we meet at least quarterly more frequently, I would say about every month or every other month. And as we do that, we're able to update, and then we have a list of where vacancies are available. I'm excited for the new software, also make it easier for the public to go and see immediately where there are vacancies. And we're streamlining the process for application. So it will be a great improvement, should be coming in the next two months.
I'd also suggest to councilors, they listen carefully to what Councilor Hoy does. Because I did this, and I ended up with a whole bunch of people from Ward One on all these boards and commissions, because I just kept turning names in and recruiting. And the council has a real strong role in this, and it's one of the reasons you're at your neighborhood groups, is to help recruit people, or just from your neighborhoods. I mean, what's amazing is Ward Six, and not surprising, but at this point, Ward Six ended up with two people on all our boards and commissions. That's a whole section of town that just didn't have real strong representation. So those are the kinds of things, I think, that as you look for a mission as councilors, it's really helpful to keep that in mind. And also, each of you have sensitivities that bring you to this work. You don't do this because you're not sensitive to the needs of the broad community. And, you know, I hope you'll, and I need to too. Don't misunderstand. I need to take that to heart as well and make sure that all of our boards and commissions are as representative as possible. So, good lesson. Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm glad that Casey brought up the issue with the improvements that are coming, because we talked at our last board and commission meeting. But in listening to some of the earlier testimony, a lot of times, we'll just shoot out a blanket. "Hey, we have boards and commission openings." And I think if we highlight each committee individually and kind of give a blurb on what it does, even on social media, that we'd get a lot better response rate from folks as well.
Yeah, I'll tell you one that does it right, is the Human Relations Committee. Actually actively recruits its own members.
Which is nice, when you know they'll work good together too on some of those.
Yeah. So anyway, I just want to bring that up. I think it's important. If you don't mind, I would like to hold off on this, and I'll be back to you with a motion as we see what the proposed membership could look like. I'll kind of determine a number and share with you the reasoning behind it. Yes, Councilor Kaser?
Thank you. I guess I just have a procedural question. If you're, right now, it says the committee shall have nine members. Are you thinking of expanding that number? And then that would come back to the council for approval and all of that?
Yes. And then you, and then I'll give you another list, and I'll check in with you, making sure, I'll circulate it to you so you all can see what I'm thinking at this point. These are my appointments, but I don't want to try to make them alone. You can see what happens when I do that.
[laughing]. Up to you this minute, Robert.
Okay?
Next question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing understanding on that. And, Councilor Kaser?
Yes, thank you. So I made the motion to request, direct staff to request ODOT to extend the deadline for receiving input on the impacts to Wallace Marine Park, Wallace Natural Area, Lemon River Water Trail for the proposed Salem River Crossing project to August 12th, 2017, and the public notices of the opportunity to comment on the impacts are placed in Wallace Marine Park. And I know since I made this motion...
I need a second before we go any further. Second by McCoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
I know since I made this motion on July 4th, I think, I sent it to you, actually, that staff has asked ODOT to extend, and ODOT has, to July 28th. And my understanding is that notices have also been posted in Wallace Marine Park, and I'll look at Director Fernandez for that, or...
Julie Warneke, Transportation Planning Manager with Public Works. A notice was posted in Wallace Marine Park on June 28th, the same day that the notice was published in the newspaper.
And just really quick, before we kind of get into the discussion about this, just some notes. This kind of caught me off guard, actually, too, because I follow this stuff pretty closely. It was the notice for public comment was posted just before the July 4th weekend, where a lot of people are gone. And also, a lot of neighborhood associations don't meet in July also. And it makes sense to me to extend this out at least so that neighborhood groups have an opportunity to comment on it when they meet again in August. The date that I made this motion, the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was going to meet on July 13th, and the comments closed on the 12th. So extending this provides the opportunity for them to comment as well. Also, it's, this meets our council goal of good governance. This is seeking, our council goal is to seek community involvement and participation in decision-making and raise awareness of opportunities to provide input and actively share information with the community. And this is like the perfect example of being able to do this, is by extending this comment period as well. So I hope you'll support the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Council Lewis?
Actually, I'd like the opportunity to ask staff questions, both the City of Salem and ODOT. I see there's a representative from ODOT, but I'm not sure if that's procedurally...
Why don't you go ahead and ask questions of Mr. Fernandez, and he'll call up who he thinks can best answer.
First one, and I'm not having a great deal of heartburn extending the extension that's already been given, but my question is, there has been what I will refer to as accusations about the inappropriateness of the process. And if that were to be the case, it doesn't matter how long we extend it, there'll be problems. And so I need confirmation, at least to hear from staff, whether it's ODOT or City of Salem, that the process is appropriate and that we should feel free to move forward, even with or without the extension.
Well, the process is, you know, that's being followed. First of all, let me be clear. This is a process that's run by the Oregon Department of Transportation, you know, on behalf of the Federal Highway Administration. It's a federal process. The, these actions are all part and parcel of publishing a final environmental impact statement. All of these issues have been a part, so this is another checkmark in the process, but this issue of where those ramps are going to go and how they lay out have been a part of the process that have been in there since a, an alternative was proposed, and the council dealt with it for a year and a half, and those ramps have always been, and their locations have always been well-known. So this is, so the, so, yeah, the process is very appropriate and has been very open throughout. This is another step that has to be conducted. So that's the answer to your first question. In the end, the determination of whether the impact is de minimis or not will come back to the council for final decision. So this is a comment period for the public. This is not necessarily a comment period for the city council. The city council will have its time in the official process, and I believe that is correct. So, you know, whatever time, we've already requested the added, some added time. ODOT has agreed. If this passes tonight, we will certainly request whatever additional time the council is suggesting to the Oregon Department of Transportation. And ultimately, it's up to them and Federal Highway Administration to determine when they will close. It's their process. It's not, it's not our process.
And two follow-up questions. One, looking at a report from October 5th, 2016, and yet, the notice of the findings that are in that report was not posted until June 28th, which is about nine months. So what was going on during the nine-month period?
Well, I think either Julie or Mr. Frickie may be able to, I don't know the answer to that question.
Julie, again, I will make an attempt here to speak on behalf of ODOT and Federal Highway Administration, and Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, Dan Frickie with ODOT. The memo that was attached to Mr. Chandler's memo from October was produced specifically for the land use process that the city was going through. And so it was really produced for a separate process. ODOT and Federal Highway, they weren't ready yet to publish their notice of the de minimis, and now they are. So, sorry, that sounds sort of lame.
So there was more work, research?
It was just other work tasks going on. This was not, and is not, has not been a critical path item. It was just that they got around to it.
Okay. And last question. The report that's dated October 5th, 2016, was it public record?
Yes.
Any further questions?
I have, and I recognize it's a splitting hairs, but we're getting awfully close to the true discussion, but we don't, we seem to keep kicking that down the road till we have to. I'd like to make what I hope would be a friendly amendment, and to have the notice period run through August 11th as opposed to August 12th. And the only reason I'm asking for that is because August 12th is a Saturday, and I don't want to hear any concern about the period was open, but it wasn't open because nobody was there. So I'm requesting it be Friday, August 11th.
Will you accept that as a friendly? Okay. Why don't we say then, the motion's August 11th. Anybody got any problems with that? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. I think Director Fernandez, this question, I'll go to Julie, because I'm interested on what was the notice? What was the content of the notice? What did the notice say that was posted on the 28th in the park?
The notice that was posted in the park was the same notice that was published in the newspaper.
Okay.
So if you've seen that, which is the same notice that was also posted on the city's webpage. With the change in the end date, we will be going out and reposting it at the park site. We've also had it translated into Spanish, and that will be posted as well. So I was waiting until I had that information. I just got that today. There will also be another notice published in the newspaper on Wednesday that ODOT submitted, and that notice will be much shorter. It will essentially be referring to the June 28th notice and indicating that the deadline has been extended. And that a copy is available in Spanish at, and it will be posted up on the ODOT Project webpage.
That's a very good idea, and thank you for doing that. The other question I have about that is, are there going to be maps of what part of the park will be affected? I'm talking about the notice that we're putting up, Ms. Warneke, not the, what ODOT is going to do.
Not with the legal notice?
No, I'm talking about the notice in the park.
Right, which is, we are posting at the request of ODOT and Federal Highway Administration. I mean, I guess we could put a map. If Federal Highway is okay with it, we can put a map up. We have been providing a map to people when they have accommodated and asked, you know, and requested that.
Will it be the map and the aerial photograph that was in the October 5th, 2016 report, or will it be a map and the aerial photograph of what is actually on the ground there where Marine Drive's coming through?
It would be a map based on what was provided in the October 5th note, memo, and the reason for that is that the aerial imagery that we've used for the River Crossing Environmental Impact Statement is the most recent one that was flown by the city, which was flown in 2014. We do not have a more recent aerial. I know we can probably borrow from Google Earth, but I'm not sure that we really can. So we, but yes, the information, the trail, and ODOT and Federal Highway have received a lot of comments about the trail that is now there, and they will definitely be addressing that in revised findings before it comes back to the city for the city's decision on concurrence or not.
That's very good. Thanks. Just one more question. In response to some questions from Council Lewis, you were, you said that these are all different tracks, you know, the city land use, the city transportation planning, the EIS statement, and, you know, ODOT has other things to do. And so they just, I think your quote was, "They just got around to it now." Which, yeah, I understand, that's the way things happen. But I guess my only question is, does that mean that a further delay is going to cause any problems? I mean, it doesn't sound like it would, because ODOT's, you know, doing what they can do when they can do it.
I'm going to make Dan come and speak.
Okay, yeah.
Why, have you seen the guy behind the curtain?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Frickie, would you introduce yourself?
For the record, Dan Frickie, Oregon Department of Transportation. I have been Julie's assistant on this project for below these many years. At this point, the 4F analysis and the notice and getting through this whole thing, as Julie said, is not a critical path item. We had the opportunity to advance it now. We would not like it to become a critical path item. So we will take appropriate consideration of whatever recommendation or whatever request the city council makes working with FHWA.
And I guess you said you would not like it to be a critical path item. The way I would understand that is you don't want it to be pushed out and pushed out and pushed out, so then you've got to make a decision right away.
I think that's a fair -- is a fair assumption, and I think that would also come from FHWA, who is the ultimate decision-maker on the level of the impact on all these things, working with the city or in the case of Willamette River Water Trail with the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, great.
Now, I'm going to make a substitute motion.
Well, why don't we clear the decks on that?
Okay, okay, I didn't know if anybody else said anything you wanted to say.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of in the same vein, it sounded like we were going to have some stuff published on Wednesday. We're requesting date changes, and there was translations. Are we pretty sure ODOT's going to approve said? And will the repostings and notices reflect the case of the motion that's on the floor right now, August 11th?
No, the -- what is being published in the paper on Wednesday and is being prepared for reposting is for the end date of July 28th, which would be a full 30 days from the original notice of June 28th.
And if we request, based on recommendation this evening, when would we expect ODOT to respond to that? And why would we notice multiple times and just attempt to confuse people more?
Well, and using the term "we," you need to be, you know, this is not the city doing the notice. ODOT and Federal Highway asked me as a local resident if I could go out and just post on the site, and if we could as a owner of the parks posted on our webpage. It is their notice. So, you know, it's sort of up to ODOT and Federal Highway whether or not they choose to change the end date. They needed to get a notice out of the extension because it was set to end on July 12th, and in order to get that in the paper to the extension, they had to submit that by, I think, 1:00 today.
Okay. That makes sense?
Okay.
Thanks.
I may not have to make a substantive motion if I can ask a few more questions.
Certainly.
You know, first of all, I guess this is just a comment that this whole thing is operating under the assumption that the bridge will be built, and so the real issue is, what will the effects of the built bridge be? So I was interested in what you had to say, Director Fernandez, because what it sounds like the process will be is, this particular notice is an information gathering notice for members of the public to comment on the effects, whether they are no effects, de minimis, constructive, you know, all the different items. Is that correct so far?
Well, that is correct. This is all serving the final environmental impact statement.
Yes, and at some point now, after this comment period closes, it will come back to the city council, and then it will be up to the council utilizing the staff reports, utilizing the consultants' reports, utilizing the information that was gathered by ODOT to make its determination as part of the EIS process as to whether there is de minimis impact or there is some other kind of impact.
I want to clarify, I don't know if the council makes a determination or concurs with the determination, so can you?
The council will be asked to concur with a determination. If the council chooses not to concur, then we have further discussions with Federal Highway, and Federal Highway makes the final determination.
So if the council chooses not to concur, that's all we do? We don't, we couldn't make a positive? Let's say it comes back de minimis. The council says, "We do not concur with this." We don't take the -- an additional step to then say, "We do not concur with this because we believe the impacts are not de minimis?"
Well, I assume that the Federal Highway Administration and ODOT would be interested in why the city did not concur.
Yeah.
The, in the draft environmental impact statement, you know, that was published, and these, the preliminary finding of de minimis was included in the materials that went before council with the land use decision. So it's not really a change, but if with additional information, the council decides not to concur, then that would just go back to Federal Highway.
Well, and, but if I believe I heard you correctly, the original determination that the council made was, we were making that determination on land use, the TSB, the urban renewal, excuse me, the urban growth boundary extension, not necessarily on, we agree with the draft environmental impact statement.
No, I think there was, when the council, the council spent a year and a half reviewing the draft environmental impact statement.
We did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did. There were numerous work sessions, and council made numerous changes. That was what led to, you know, what was nicknamed the Salem Alternative.
Okay.
From the recommended -- so in that, you know, there was, you know, this whole document that the council reviewed and provided comment on that led, again, and the council spent a year and a half simply to provide comment back to the draft EIS.
Okay.
So the EIS, again, is a process that's run by ODOT, and we are commenters on that process.
So I guess that, I think that answers the question I had, Director Fernandez, because in my two and a half years in the council, we haven't had that discussion. That discussion was before the election.
That's right.
Boy, I got my years all mixed up, but whatever year it was that I was elected and began serving on the council, which I --
Correct.
Was 2015, so that was made before 2015.
Right, all of that work, and there were numerous public hearings, but all of that was to provide council, for the citizens to provide council input so that the council could make comment to the draft environmental impact.
And now this impact is impacts that would make comment to the final EIS.
Right, and this is just, and this is just a piece of that, so we're just talking about this.
This is just 4F, I understand that.
Exactly, this 4F determination, not necessarily the entirety of the environmental impact statement.
And if we were to restart the whole thing, and I'm not sure what that entails, so perhaps you could explain what that might entail, either maybe you or Mr. Frickie, because, yeah, I mean, what would that entail? I'm just talking about now restarting the 4F public comment that we're talking about right now.
Just restarting the 4F, the comment process over?
Yes.
It would just be more time. I think at this point, we'd have to discuss with FHWA and my in-house 4F experts, who are certainly much more versed on 4F than I am. It's a very complicated process, I'm sure you're beginning to understand.
Yes, I am. So, but the, did the process start on June 28th of this year?
4F process really started back in the days when we were preparing the draft EIS. There was a draft 4F report that went out with the EIS.
All right, I understand that.
The comment period on the recommendation, the final recommendation, if you want to call it that, the 4F report started when we published the public notice on June 28th.
June 28th.
Okay.
That was the request for comment.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Although, yeah.
I'm sorry. I have one more question, just for my own clarification, is, can the council during this comment period make comments about the determinations, the 4F determinations?
Well, the council can always do whatever as a body chooses to do, but you will have a formal opportunity
Right.
To do that. So my recommendation would be for you to wait and allow the process to work itself through, and then you as a body can make comment when it is presented to you by the Federal Highway Administration.
One more follow-up, if I may. As far as, we heard some public testimony tonight about the Union Street Bridge, and the determination was no use. Would council comment about that resource and the no use come into play during the concurrence with the 4F determinations?
Yeah, you'll get a full report, and it's really an issue of the impact. The ramps do not cross the bridge. The ramps cross perhaps a portion of the trestle.
The trestle.
And then, you know, I think it's the trestle, because the embankment is further out. And I believe that the initial determination of de minimis is that the ramps are up above and, you know, are on their way down, so you can still, bicyclists and pedestrians can still traverse underneath it. 14 feet, I think, is the
10 to 15.
So, I mean, it's not designed, so, but it's
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is because that's a National Register-listed resource, and I brought up the nomination for it in the boundary description, and the trestle is included
Sure.
In the boundary description for that. And I know for my Section 4F days at SHPO, that environmental impacts, including visual and auditory, are considered effects to resources. But anyways, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, we have motion on the floor. Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We are, we have no ordinances, no first readings, let's do second readings.
Ordnance Bill number 1017, an ordinance related to
The allowance in regulation of accessory dwelling units, creating new provisions and amending SRC 111.005, 111.20020, 400.030, 510.005, 511.005, 512.010, 513.005, 514.005, 515.005, 521.005, 522.005, 523.005, 524.005, 532.015, 532.020, 551.005, 553.005, 554.005, 700.005, .035, .050, 055, 806.005, and 015, 025, 055, and 806.075.
Counselor McCoy?
Yes, I move to engross ordinance number 1017 to add Exhibit A to the ordinance, which consists of facts and findings in support of the decision.
Second by Nanki.
Counselor Osik? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. Good. So all of you doing accessory dwelling units? Line up, yeah. Okay, we are down to public comment, other than agenda items. Richard Koenig.
Thank you. I'm a little bit chagrined that
I need your name and your address.
All right. There's my name. I'm from Sherwood, and
Welcome to Salem.
I have been stepped on by members of the racketeering enterprise, thrown in jail, stuck in the state hospital, thrown out, disgorged, without even being arraigned, held there for 10 months, but that was only one time. It's been repeated. And I'm reluctant to give out the information that's my own private property. So what I'd like to do tonight is get something substantial out of our meeting. So I'm going to separate the wheat from the chaff. Tonight, I'm going to say, those who willfully withhold evidence of the racketeering enterprise that I'm, you know, bringing to your attention are probably, let's say, they are members of the same enterprise. So I'd like you to go with me through this questionnaire that you all have, and I want you to sign it at the bottom and give it to your communications guy before I leave. Was Dan Atchison acting within or without the scope of his official capacity when he banned Richard from the City of Salem premises? And that would be one word, within or without. So you write that down, and each of you has an opportunity to do this, and each of you who does not do this will be presumed a racketeer. Okay, if he was acting without the scope of his official capacity, this is not a real, a proper City of Salem issue. But if he was within, please state the city ordinance or state law which authorizes his act, and the nature of the unacceptable conduct giving rise to Dan's sanctions. Provide the name of my talk-to-person with whom I may proceed to investigate the racketeering each council member here has already acknowledged is ongoing in the City of Salem. That's another line. Under the heretofore stated relevant circumstances, what is the timeframe in which I may receive an Internal Affairs Unit determination as to whether Deputy Chief Steve Belshaw is a liar? That would be in terms of months or years. Now, date it and sign it. And can you pick that up?
Mr. Koenig, your time's up.
I got it.
Thank you very much. You got a question?
Yeah, I got a question for you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Koenig, you have appeared in front of this body numerous times. I don't know if before you got to the point where you referred to the counselors as racketeers, if they don't follow your direction, or you refer to the Assistant Chief. But I don't see you getting very far with this body. So if you really want to do something, do something.
Yeah.
Why don't you get a lawyer and sue the city? Try that. You're not getting anywhere with this body.
Tonight, I think that you have convinced me that nobody here is acting in your official capacity, so it's not like a City of Salem issue. It's all of you folks in your individual capacities, and you all are subject to liens, so, you know, maybe that'll happen. But
Okay.
We can't continue to let racketeers run the City of Salem.
Mr. Koenig, we're going to adjourn.
Can we?
We're adjourned.